Recording. On Zoom and then I'm also going to start our live feed on Facebook and we'll begin in just a moment. Okay, we're live on Facebook now. And. Get a couple of things in order here. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Todd Schmidt. I'm the village administrator. I'm just gonna go through a few logistics. Some of these you guys can probably say in your sleep now that we've done it a few times, but just to make sure everybody's on the same page. So for those who are participating as public attendees, just so you know, you are muted automatically. During the during items when public can speak like the public comment section, I can unmute you, which which can be done by you indicating to me that you like to speak. There's a little raised hand feature for those who are participating with the Zoom feature and and when we open up the public comment section, click on the raised hand and I will see those who want to speak in the order in which they raise their hands and then we'll bring people in to speak. I learned something new. Those who may be participating by phone. Yeah, Scott, I see you're laughing, teaching an old dog new tricks. I know. But if you press star nine on your phone, that will show me that your phone has raised its hand. And then I can bring in your phone number into the into speak as well. So we'll remind you of that when we come to that section of the agenda. So for board members, you guys know the drill. You're automatically muted and remain muted unless you need to participate or you're called upon to vote. Except for board members, mute both your audio and your video when you're not participating in an item. And then just to make sure we don't miss anybody in a discussion process for the board, President Zellner generally plans to call upon each member of the board to get your comments. If you don't have any, that's fine. Just say no comments. But otherwise, we don't want to miss comments if you might have them. And then all votes are going to be taken by roll call by the village clerk. Just remember to unmute yourself when that time comes. With that, I will turn the meeting over to Chris.
Thanks, Todd. I'm gonna call the meeting for June 1, 2020 to order roll call, please, Kayla.
Nyla Frye. Welcome back to our Gary Hertzberg.
Yeah, I'm here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Bill Rannam. Kristen Rungy.
Here.
Bill Williams.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here.
Nyla Frye. Todd, can you unmute her?
I'm back. I was in some.
She's here.
Okay, and I'll just point out Bill Bill Rannam is hoping to join us. He had a situation happen at the clinic and will be joining as soon as he possibly can. Next, we have our confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability. Caitlin.
The draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on May 28. The updated final agenda was posted at all three village posting locations on May 29 and the updated agenda and packet was posted online on May 29.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or I'd look for a motion? Now, Nyla put her hand up. Go ahead, Nyla.
Um, I can't vote on item two. Because I wasn't a member of the board. I don't believe I can vote on those. Is that correct?
I don't know the official rule, but I don't. I mean, if you don't feel comfortable voting on it, then you can abstain from voting on the then items, but I think you are free to vote on those minutes.
I don't feel comfortable voting on them because I was not a member of the board at that time.
Okay.
I didn't know if they had to be polled or exactly how we had to do that.
Yeah, we should pull that from the agenda.
Okay, so let's pull number two. And then just we'd be voting on number one at this point, and then we can come back to number two. So do we have a motion for number one on the consent agenda?
Move approval of item one on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Phil Wellum, second by Kristen Rungy. Any other comments? Please raise your hands. Otherwise, roll call vote, please.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Rannam. Oh, sorry, he's not here. Chris Zellner, sorry.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We'll come. We'll come back to number two then under new business. Next, we have public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to make a comment for any item that's not on the agenda for this evening? If so, raise your hand for Todd.
Yep, I've got a couple of hands coming up. And I don't see anybody participating by phone at the time. So as a reminder, those of you who are attending the bottom of your screen, you should see your raise hand function somewhere on your screen. There should be a raise hand function. I can see those go up and bring people in in the order in which the hands are raised. So first is Anne Lewandowski and I will bring her in to speak now. Chris, is your intention to have the one minute, one minute for comments today?
Yeah, keep the same consistency for public comment section.
Okay, so I believe Caitlin will be sort of tracking that time and we'll we'll let a speaker know if that time has come up. Okay, Anne.
Anne Lewandowski, 1003 West Third Street. The village is having banners displayed downtown as a graduation replacement. Kids who receive drinking tickets are often often receive a graduation related punishment by not being able to walk. So I am asking you today if any of the students involved with the incident driving around yelling hate speech are eligible for these banners that you revoke that privilege. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Next.
Okay. Couple steps here. All right, next is Mary Heimbecker. I'll bring her in now. Okay, Mary, if you unmute, you can ask your question.
My name is Mary Heimbecker. I'm at 306 West Third Street, Wannakee. And I would like to request that item two under new business be open for public comment at the time of discussion. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Next.
We do not have anyone else at the moment. Hand is up. Robert McPherson, I'll bring him in now. Okay, Robert, if you unmute.
Robert McPherson, 1703 Alexandria Court. I'd like to second what Mary's stating and ask if we can get clarification on that early since that would indicate whether or not additional public comments should be made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Todd, any other comments?
No hands raised. Chris, how would you like to address the question that Robert brought up about wanting clarification before we close? This item.
So generally, what our practice has always been is to have items on consent or on the, I'm sorry, on the public comment section where people can make comments on different issues. For things that are put through that are on the agenda that are not listed for public hearing, we generally do not take comments during that timeframe. And it is my intent to request for the board when we get to item number two, that we just have a discussion and then open it that we're going to have a public hearing sometime into the future. I can't speak to whether the board is going to be agreeable to that at this point. That is my intention at this point. So I don't really want to change and set precedence with regards to public comments that they just take place during this for anything on the agenda that we're going to open that up. So that said, it is my intent and hope that the board will have a public hearing on this after tonight's meeting. Any other comments?
Can I ask a question? So if there are people who are waiting to to comment on number two, they they have the opportunity to do so now and we would welcome to hear those comments, correct?
No, what I was indicating that in we will have a future meeting that we're going to have a public hearing. I don't think tonight is going to be the end all for this discussion. I think that's very important that we have public participation in our process. And this was requested by a citizen for me to have this on the agenda at the end of last week, which we were able to accomplish. It was my intent to not put it on the agenda and have people comment during public comments. The person convinced me that we should put it on the agenda. For that reason, we're just staying consistent with what our policy's been. And I'm hoping that all of you as board members will agree that we have a public hearing on this in the near future. I don't think this is ideal at all on Zoom to do public hearings. But hopefully, we can get together and have that public hearing as soon as possible, whether it has to be Zoom or in person. Does that clarify, Kristen?
Yes.
Any other comments?
There's no hands up at the moment. There's a hand up. Jennifer Smalls, I'm gonna bring her in. Okay, Jennifer, if you unmute yourself.
Sorry, that was unintentional.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to say? All right, sorry, I'll put you back into the attendee section. At least it proves that the raise hand thing works, even if by accident. There's no other hands up, Chris, at the moment.
Okay. Then let's move along. Our first item is licensed supermists. Discuss and take action on change of premise for Monarcha LLC doing business as El Charro Mexican Grill. Kayla?
Included in your packet is a business who is applying for a change of premise for the current license year. They, El Charro is adding 2,200 square feet to their to their premise, which includes a bar seating 12 individuals and additional dining room space that could seat up to 94 individuals. This is an interior premise amendment only and it's up for approval tonight. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, board members, any questions for Caitlin or I'd look for a motion?
That is a very nice business. In there several times. I'd like to make a motion. We approve their premise change permitting the additional 2,241 square feet to include bar seating of 12 individuals and additional dining room space increasing seating by 94 individuals.
I'll second that motion.
Second, Gary by Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments from board members? Please raise your hand if you have a comment. Okay, seeing none. Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Bill Williams. Bill Williams.
Bill, you need to unmute.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have, we'll go back to number two from the consent agenda to approve the February 3, 2020, February 17, 2020, and March 2, 2020, village board minutes.
I moved to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Erin Moran. Any other comments? Raise your hand, please. Otherwise, call the question. Caitlin, roll call vote.
Nyla Frye.
I don't know how to vote. I mean.
Abstain. You don't want to vote because of the reason abstained.
Okay. Abstain.
Kristen Rungy.
I.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Bill Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Okay, first item under new business discussion update, discussion and update regarding COVID-19 pandemic. Todd, are you gonna leave this one off?
Yeah, and but quickly, I'll be turning it over to Scott Russell for a brief update. You had a more robust update a couple of weeks ago from your department head team and a lot of those plans are being worked on. One thing I do want to show and share for those who are watching, attending, I want to share my screen and show you where on the village website you can find all of our information about about the COVID stuff. Now, where is that? Oh, this actually popped up first and while I got a second. This is, this is a picture of Sherry Wagner Henry. I know I'm off topic. If the village attorney was here, he would slap me. But Sherry was the director of the Bull Center. And if you recall, she helped us with our study for the Create Wannakee Committee that's now formed. Big super fan of the village, major supporter, been in our corner for years. She unexpectedly passed away this past Friday. So really sad for that. A number of us had become pretty good friends with her over over the years. So we will miss Sherry. But thanks for allowing me to digress. So for those who are watching, if you go to, if you type in Google Wannakee and COVID, one of the very first items that come up is a page on the village website. COVID-19 updates. And we update this relatively regularly last end of the week. Last week, I asked our the department head team about twice a week if any updates are needed or they let me know real time as things go. But this for every department indicates what our situation is. I know in the last week, for example, as I scroll down to parks. Last week, the Parks Department laid out a plan for some incremental opening of certain parks and certain shelters and certain park restrooms. So that's been added and updated, but that's the that is the place to go to find out what what's shaking as as far as village facilities and village functions with COVID. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen and turn it over to Scott for an update on what's happening in the county.
Thanks, Todd. Um, as of our conference call this morning, the county's at 737 total positive tests for new ones coming in yesterday. It's kind of interesting. If you go online, they have a cumulative data set that you can watch. It's called the COVID-19 dashboard. So there's 737 confirmed cases and over 37,000 total tests. That test number is really the one to watch. So last week was actually the worst week we've had yet on record since the start of this as far as new cases go. I'm averaging about 21 new cases per day. But that's kind of a number you take lightly because we're also testing a lot more than we had been in the past. If anyone's not aware, there is a community testing site at the Light Energy Center. It's very, very efficient to go through. It's a simple nasal swab. It's not the nasty one that you have all heard horror stories about. And right now they're doing between six and 700 samples a day through that site. We just found out this morning that they are going to extend that to stay open through June 24, actually. So that's good. My guess is that's probably going to get extended again. I know Todd brought up the opening the parks up and stuff and that's all part of that that forward Dane Plan. The Ford Dane Plan takes a 14 day average as far as all of his data sets go. So even though we had a rough week last week, that 14 day plan looks like we're very possibly going to go into phase two this week, which if everything stays on track, will end up happening. Once we go into that, it does open a few things up. It's gonna allow for up to 50 people in an indoor setting. It's gonna allow opening to some of the parks, letting a few more people into restaurants and bars and those kinds of things. So we are kind of keeping our eye on how that goes here locally to kind of get a judge of it. We have not seen any positive patients in almost a month now. So locally here as a community, we seem to be doing really well. The one unnerving stat that I keep looking at day and day is right now we're at a little over 14% of the positive cases are completely asymptomatic. So you still have no idea who out there is carrying it and who isn't. The recommendations out there right now is still very strong to wear face coverings. It's not required right now through public health, but very, very strongly recommending it not only to protect yourself, but more so to protect others that you may come in contact with. Um, let's see here. One question that the county's been getting a lot that they did want to share this evening as well. I've seen some signs around town here for garage sales. Technically, garage sales are not permitted under this phase of the Ford Dane Plan yet. So we do still ask that residents refrain from having garage sales, at least until we move up into that second stage of the plan and and get moving forward on that. Other than that, everything else has been looking pretty good. The PPE levels are doing well in the county, doing very well here locally. Obviously, right now, our biggest concern COVID wise is what's going to come from the large gatherings this weekend. If we're going to see any spikes coming out of that or not. I'm not going to speak to that anymore than than I just did, but that's kind of what we're keeping our pulse on at this point. That's really about all that's going on in the county. It's kind of taking a backseat this weekend, so.
Can I ask you a quick question? For you, Scott, we're while Zoom has sort of worked, I would admit that we're probably much more eager to get back to in-person meetings. What what does the county county's phasing plan call for or would allow us to do as we progress? And what would you recommend?
So the plan, if it goes into a phase two, the plan will allow you to have 50 people in one area. However, you still have to maintain the six foot of social distancing. If I remember correctly, your guys' boardroom will not handle 50 people at six feet apart. So that's where you start running into problems. If you guys want to meet as a board, you can very easily socially distance in that room. The problem comes is you don't know how much public participation you're going to have coming into that. To maintain the whole public meeting concept, you can't limit how many people come into the meeting. My suggestion, what I've been telling people is if you want to meet as a group, do it. But have the audience still be a virtual audience and interactive through the Zoom concept. That way, you're ensuring that you still have the participation capabilities from the public. But at the same time, you're still maintaining that social distancing. Now, listening to the earlier comments and the possible public hearing you guys may be discussing this evening, there are some concepts around finding a larger venue. If you guys do wish to have an in-person public hearing, there are capabilities to do that should the county move to a phase two this week. That's one thing to keep your eye on. But you will have to find a much bigger venue to be able to allow for that. For instance, if you have 50 people from the public come in plus 10 to 12 employees and board members and so on. That's going to take a lot of space. If you start calculating now that how many square feet a six foot radius is for each person, it's it's going to need to be a pretty big space, but it is doable if that's something that you guys do decide to do. We just have to do some forward planning on it.
Hey, Caitlin, have you heard of any put her on the spot here, have any creative approaches occurring in some other communities for trying to bring bring back in-person meetings for the public?
I have not heard of anything of yet, but I can keep my ears and eyes open for what I'm hearing and seeing.
Okay, I would. So what I would say to the attendees who are watching is that our goal is to get back to that as soon as possible and the the staff and I are are keeping our eyes on our abilities and our capacity to get back to the best type of meetings, which are those face to face. Thanks, Scott, for filling us in on that situation.
All right, thanks, Todd.
Board members, do you have any questions for Scott? Phil?
None.
Kristen Rungy?
None. Thank you, Scott.
Nyla Frye?
No.
Gary Hertzberg?
I'm good.
Erin Moran?
A question. So thank you for all you've continued to do.
So my only question for you, Scott, would be based on what Todd just requested and Caitlin and their conversation. If we wanted to have the meeting, the six foot requirement is there. We could have up to 50 people. We couldn't have 50 people plus the board members. I want to make sure we're clear on that.
That actually, not to cut you off, that that's actually a little wishy-washy and I'm hoping to get some clarification. So what what phase two says is 50 people not counting employees. And so the question would be is are you board members considered employees?
Okay, and then my next question for Todd and Caitlin then would be could we do it in a way so we could have us all present and do it maybe in a sign up situation where people could register ahead of time to be present? And then have the rest of the people have to be on Zoom? Is that a possibility?
You know, I think we'd want to research that. I'm wondering if there may be a a legal implication there in terms of equal access. But I want to, we'll check with our village attorney and work on work on that question and the other solutions talked about.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Scott. Todd, you left the building. Are we are you, is that everything we're gonna have for the COVID-19?
Unless there's, we have a couple of staff members on. Unless there's any questions in general regarding village operations, we're happy to try and answer.
Okay, any questions from from anyone? Please raise your hand. We'll do it that way for this. Doesn't look like it. Okay, let's move on to our next agenda item then, which is discussing discussion on tolerance and inclusiveness in the village. So as I mentioned earlier, it's going to be my intent to have a discussion tonight amongst us. You are all free to make any comments you'd like with regards to this. I think it's important that we come together with a unified statement. And before before we start, I think Kristen's gonna have a really nice statement for us. That that's been drafted, but I'm just going to speak for myself to start with with regards to this issue and it's a terrible thing that's been happening, starting in Minnesota this week as well as Madison and the things that are happening. And I don't condone any of that. I see no place in our society or community where racism, bigotry, bullying, antisemitism, or hate are acceptable. I believe Wannakee is a great community. It's important for people to recognize that it is not okay to make statements that are offensive to anyone. Every person has the right to be respected regardless of race, gender, religion, or beliefs. However, every person needs to make the choice of being respectful to others. One can't necessarily control the actions of others, but one can work to bring awareness and inclusiveness. As a community, we can do this in a productive and positive way. Being an inclusive community involves working together to continue understanding, acceptance, and respect for one another. As I stated earlier, again, I think it's a very important step that we're taking as a board tonight in condemning this and these types of behaviors and believe that it's important that the public have their opportunity to weigh in as well. And in the in the future weeks, coming weeks, that we have that opportunity for our residents and for those who would like to participate. That said, I will open it up to the rest of you for comments. I'm just gonna go around the screen here as it's showing up for me right now. So Erin Moran.
Before you jump, Chris, one thing, I do have the statement, just when you want that shown, I have the statement up on a Word document. And when you want that shown and reviewed, I can put that on the screen to just let me know.
Perfect. Thank you. Erin, go ahead.
Well, I go exactly what she said. I'm equally frustrated and heartbroken over what we've seen. Nationwide and especially in our own community, obviously not new issues and I am thankful that so many people are, including us, can use this moment to help prompt continued action and I hope that this continues as a priority for us and that our community is inclusive and that all of our residents and visitors are, but also feel welcome. You know, we do what we can to. You know, we do what we can to ensure that.
Thank you, Erin. Gary Hertzberg?
Yeah, I think it's just, I think just like the school board, I think the village board has a responsibility to, to really stand up and make sure people in the community feel safe, included in everything this community does. You know, I've always had a high, I guess, a high level of, uh, confidence that Wannakee will pull through something like this and, uh, that ninety-nine percent of the citizens are, ninety-nine point nine percent of the citizens think the same way as we do, but I think it's something we have to work on, not once a week, but we got to work on it every day. And it just makes sure the community moves forward.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Kristin Runge?
I'm muting my mic here. Um, so I, I was invited and I attended a conversation on Saturday night via Zoom. Um, I want to thank those that organized it and, and thank them for giving me the opportunity to listen in. There were about fifty participants, um, ranging from a couple of people who were in their young thirties to people in their fifties. Most were residents of color, their family members, and there were a number of allies in the, the Zoom as well. Um, and I listened as they talked about specific instances, um, that they've experienced, that their children have experienced over the years. And the effects that they've had on, um, themselves and on their family, it's difficult to, to listen to. Um, it's, it's got to be unbelievably painful to, to experience, um, and painful to talk about those issues. Um, so I, 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 I don't have the words to express how grateful I am that they were brave enough to discuss what has happened to them. And, and brave enough to stand up and, and tell us we need to be a better community. And I hope that, that we can live up to what they deserve and, um, what they need. So, and it speaks to a very real, real problem in our community. Some of which is, is happening with our youth, some of which is happening, um, all over the community. And while we're in the process of, of watching the school district and supporting the school district and beginning to address the issues that they may be experiencing and the issues that we are experiencing as a village. Um, you know, there's some things that I'm, I'm hoping we can do to, to rectify the situation immediately. Um, you know, things, maybe we should be talking about offering bystander tra- uh, bystander training or, um, conducting assessments of what's going on, um, some formal way of tracking incidents so that we understand the problem in kind of a formal and quantitative um, way. And for those of you that, that have been affected, I want to encourage you to continue to, um, report it. When an incident happens, um, reporting leads to action. It leads to the conversation we're having now. It leads to the hearings that we're, we're going to have. And, um, I just want to personally pledge that, that I will do whatever I can in my power to help make this right and make this better.
Thanks, Kristen. Um, Nala Frye?
Okay, um, Wannakee has changed and will continue changing, and change is a very difficult thing for all of us. And due to events in the last few months, citizens have brought a need to the village. And when citizens feel marginalized, they do not feel included in the community. Work on inclusion for citizens of color or anyone not fitting into the status quo will not begin if we don't acknowledge there is an issue and we're acknowledging that right now. Through a community effort as a whole, we can learn to communicate, actively listen, and begin to open our ears, minds, and hearts to each other. The school district is beginning to work on the issue. And I'm wondering if the village could join in on that conversation and be part of that group. Um, and I'm, if it's not, if, if it's approved by the school, because we would be entering the process a little late. And I'm also wondering if the houses of worship, um, would be interested in joining this group because um, as a community, we are stronger than going at this from different directions. We don't have to invent the wheel. We just have to be a spoke of many spokes in the wheel. And, um, I really, I want to work on my, um, self. And I encourage those in the community to work every day to improve, improve the situation for everyone. Thanks.
Thanks, Nala. Todd, I, I, before I get to Phil, maybe you can address what Nala's, uh, comment with regards to working with the school district and that we're late to the game. I don't think we're late to the game.
Oh, oh, yeah, um, was that a week or two ago? Um, Chris and I had a, a conference call with the superintendent of schools along with the school board president and vice president. During that meeting, we talked about a number of things, um, and one of them was about the upcoming, this upcoming committee. I made the request during that meeting that the district consider allowing if it's sort of almost officially asking the village to have a seat at the table as an organization. Similar to what we did when we had the, uh, housing task force. We reserved a position on the housing task force for a representative from the school district. I don't, I don't necessarily feel comfortable speaking for the district. Except I do recall one response being that their main priority was making sure they had a broad cross-section representative of the entire community that they serve. But, uh, there was, after that request, there was no, uh, additional follow-up from them in terms of asking us specifically for the, a village seat at that, uh, at that committee table. It's not to mean that we're not going to follow it and certainly can't pay attention. I don't know if they'll be televising or what have you, but um, I'm sure many of us, if not all of us, will be eager to see all the work that the committee will be doing. So, so, uh, we did, I don't remember the date of that meeting, Chris, do you? It was a couple of weeks ago.
Couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. While they were still accepting applicants.
Perfect. All right, thanks, Todd. Okay, Phil Williams?
Well, as soon as possible, we have to have that meeting so these, these folks can express their concerns, et cetera. But until then, I think we should go out of our way to make friends with people. We, uh, stop wearing and get people to stop wearing the tacky shirts that have a, a bad message on them. And anything we can to stop this shouting and public displays of animosity that have nothing but negative ends and invite more of the same.
Okay, thanks, Phil. So I'm, I'm just going to kind of close, um, our discussion before we get on to Kristen's recommendations that Todd's going to put up on the screen and say, it's important that all of our, our board members, and, and if, if people look across our board, they're not going to see a tremendous amount of diversity. Tonight, it's kind of interesting because we do have three men and three women, which is a good representation from that perspective. But we have to also try to look through the eyes of our minorities and make sure that we can look and appreciate the things that they are experiencing. I actually, and I'm not trying to compare myself to, in the situation I had, but I think it's important to, to recognize. I went out of Dane County and ordered a takeout at a restaurant out of the community. And I walked into the restaurant to take the takeout and I had a mask on. And there was probably fifty people within that restaurant. Not one of them had a mask on, and they all looked at me with a look of, we'll just say displeasure that I was wearing that mask um, as I walked in. And I thought to myself, this is probably, if I'm coming into Wannakee and I'm a person of color and I go into a restaurant and I'm the only person there that's different, what are the looks that I receive? Are they going to be a pleasant, positive look? Probably from the majority of the people, that's going to be a yes. But there's going to be some, unfortunately, in any community across the country that may not give the best of looks. And so trying to get people to understand and look at through different lenses, what's happening is very important as we go forward. And as a community as a whole, not just our board, not just the school board, but the community as a whole. And, and I hope and pray that we as a community do not have a divide that's occurring. Our newest police, our new police chief, Adam Kreitzman, is on this Zoom right now, and I'm going to say to Adam, I support you one hundred percent. The things that happened in Minnesota are not a reflection of our police department. They're not a relative reflection of most police across the country. Okay, it was a few individuals that did something that was horrid. And look what it's caused. My own nephew had his car smashed in Madison last night. What did he do? Nothing. He didn't have a choice because people are reacting that way. So I'm, I'm, I'm saying this, this is far-reaching across our country right now, and it includes Wannakee. We're no different. So us being a leader is not a bad thing. It's a great thing. I know that many communities, because I've talked to the leaders of those communities, look up to Wannakee for all the things that we've accomplished. This is one that maybe we're not at the top of, and we're going to get there. That's the goal. So I'll end with that and then bring it to Todd, and Todd, if maybe you can bring up, um...
Yeah, I'll bring up, uh, that document, but actually, Kristen, um, you penned it really well. If, I would be happily able to turn it over to you to, to read it. So is that okay, Chris?
Well, I suppose. Yeah, of course. Okay, go ahead, Kristen.
Thanks. And, and this is, I'll clarify, this is, this is not a statement of action. I, I, I think the philosophy is there, there's, there's no decision about us without us. And so we need to have this, the public hearing, and we, we need, um, people to weigh in and, and continue to express what they've, they've, what they've been experiencing. Um, I'll put my reading glasses on. Um, so we believe that our strength as a community is drawn from our steadfast support for one another. We believe that members of our community have a responsibility to know one another and help one another. We believe that diversity makes us a stronger community. We believe that Wannakee should be an inclusive community where individuals from different races, cultures, ethnicities, religions, backgrounds, and orientations are valued, respected, and supported. We believe that when one member of our community is devalued, we are all devalued. We recognize that words have power, can cause real and tangible harm to individuals and tear at the fabric of a community. And because we hold these things dear, we condemn in the strongest terms possible any word, deed, or action that seeks to marginalize, degrade, or harm others based on their race, their culture, their ethnicity, their religion, their background, or their orientation. So thank you for those of, of you who have alerted us at, to what is going on and stood on this. We're very grateful and will continue to work to make this better.
So my advice, Chris, um, to, for the, if the board, unless there's edits that board members would suggest, or if you want to discuss through that, to, uh, to consider adopting that statement. And, uh, I would be, I would encourage you to do so, uh, and to actually take a vote to adopt that collectively as your board's position. I did see, I did see a question come up. Um, I can't necessarily watch all the comments, but I saw one question come up about the question about banners. During this meeting, I've already sent an email to the organization that's coordinating the banner project indicating that concern and that request. I guess if that is a request to the village board, that's something you can consider. But largely, the project itself has been led and coordinated by a group independent of the village. So I just wanted to mention that I have sent that message to the organizers of the banner project. If you want to consider it differently, let me know.
So we have two, two things there. My only comment, Todd, and if you want to clarify for me with regards to, I, I'm perfectly, I'm just going to say, Kristen, I think you did a, a, a perfect job with what you did, but that said, we're going to be having a public hearing. And there may be people in our community that want something added to that, that we would, should, we should consider. And so by accepting it tonight, I mean, I would say, yes, I accept it, but I think it has room for growth, um, as a living, breathing document for things that might be out there. That's just my initial thoughts. So I'm going to throw that out to the board members and get your takes on it. Kristen, you wrote it. What, what are your thoughts?
Absolutely, yeah. Uh, we needed to make a statement tonight. We, we couldn't delay making a statement and taking, taking a position on this, um, to, to write something far more comprehensive. In other communities that have done this, there has been this sort of initial opening, expression of intolerance for intolerance and, and stand against racism. And then typically a resolution, um, that comes with a much larger effort from, uh, from a wider representation of community members. Eau Claire recently went through this and, um, had brought in members of the university, uh, wide cross-section of people that weighed in and crafted that. So, yes, so this is the stand we're taking. Now it's the start and not the end of the conversation. This is the beginning.
Maybe one way we could put this out there, because I, I think, I think we're eager to, to have this message understood and known and, and sort of revealed and released, but perhaps we issue it as a working statement. Which sort of sets out the notion that this, this isn't the end-all, be-all. I already see a comment about talking about disabled persons or uh, econi- uh, economic, uh, status, uh, conditions. So, um, setting it up or setting it out, uh, tomorrow morning as a working statement of the village board might be completely appropriate and send the right message that I think I hear all of you, or Chris and Kristen, you suggesting that we get more comments on it.
I think, and so let me, let me go around and, and, and obviously get input from the other board members to make sure everybody's good with that, or if they have something they'd like to add as well. Gary Hertzberg?
Um, no, I think, I think that's the right direction to go. I think this is a working document, but it needs to evolve with the whole community and kind of a coordinated effort.
Phil Williams?
It's a start. It's a step in the right direction. Uh, I do think that, like some of the people are saying, we should address, just like we would a walkover graduation, if somebody has done something wrong at a graduation ceremony, they're not allowed to participate. Maybe we should carry it that much farther with these banners. Thank you.
Nala Frye?
Nala, you're muted.
There you go.
Okay, am I here? Okay. Um, I think the plan to have this as a works in progress would be good. We have a very good start. Thank you, Kristen, for that. Thank you for attending the meeting over the weekend. Um, I wasn't in town. I didn't know about it until I got back Sunday afternoon. But I do appreciate all the work that you've done on this so far. Um, and once we get the support or the information from how the citizens feel about it and, and, uh, their additions, uh, I think we'll have a great, um, document to work with. Thank you.
Erin Moran?
Yeah, I hope, um, I, I'm eager to hear, um, what people have to say. I think, um, especially as we are going through the strategic planning process and, you know, we have talked about how we really want to involve the community in that. Um, I think this is a huge part of that. Um, and way back in November, I remember us kind of talking about this and I hope we can combine those things. Um, I think working document is great as, it's kind of what I see as our, we're always trying to do better and be better for our community. Um, so I think anything we do, we should always, maybe that's a working document. I hope we can do something that's meaningful.
Okay, thanks. Dr. Randam, I see you've joined. Um, you're looking like I did when my children were born, um, with the outfit you have on. But, um, thank you for joining us, and I know that you, uh, were called into duty there for a longer period of time than you anticipated. So, um, do you have any comments right now? Do you know where we're at in the agenda? We're at number two, and, um, we just are basically figuring out whether our document, we should be having, um, community input beforehand as a working document, um, for, for us to make a final document ultimately.
Right, so I missed almost all of it. Um, I guess...
I guess my interest is also that we keep it on agendas over time. I mean, this seems to be one of those things that should be there for basically forever at some cycle. So to make sure we're on topic over the, over years instead of months, which seems to be the thing that happens here.
Okay, so Todd, I think what you're looking at is maybe we want a motion to make this our statement of working document. Something along those lines, I'm, I'm not sure the exact terminology we'd want to use, but.
Well, let me just, let me just go back to the document here real quick. So it's titled, "The Village of Wannakee Board of Trustees' Statement Regarding Racist Incidents in Our Community." I think, you know, to, to, in between trustees and statement, call it working statement or put it right at the front in asterisks, working document, dash, Village of Wannakee, da, da, da. So that may be the best way to do it and we could promote it that way.
Okay, based on the.
I would make that motion that we approve a working document for the Village of Wannakee Board of Trustees' Statement Regarding Racist Incidents in Our Community.
I'll second it.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg, a second by Nyla. My only question is with regards to the comments we're receiving in the Zoom and the handicap portion and those, it's saying racist only on there as the racism, I think you just took it off, so I missed it here.
Oh.
I have it. Somewhere here.
Yeah, maybe Kristin, as Chris is looking for it.
Regarding.
Here he is going with a tweak to that header.
Yeah, we can take that out. We're responding specifically to the videotape. We, but this can be an inclusive statement of, of all incidents.
So Chris, I can, I can work at, if you're all right with it, I'll work at modifying the title so it is, it is a broader statement.
That said, Gary, are you, are you okay with that?
I accept that.
Nyla, with your second, are you?
Yes.
Okay. So then we have a motion and a second. Do we have anybody else who has any comments? Please raise your hand. Todd?
Yeah, the, the question about Kevin even actually texted me while we were talking and I'm glad he did. We had brought up the issue with the banners and the concern about allowing or disallowing students on that, on the banner, who were involved in this latest incident. As a very specific action with which that would be, it's not specifically listed on our agenda to take action regarding the banner project. So I would, I would, if Brian were here, I think he would tell you that that would not be something you can take specific action on. But I would say that I've already gotten two response emails from Terrace Wall, the organizer of that project. And it's something that I'll be continuing to, to work to address and see, see what their reaction is to that request.
Okay, so I, I'm, is it, Todd, is it appropriate for the chat areas to, to discuss those for people that are bringing them in? I mean, you brought one and I just, I just kind of want to address them, is that appropriate before we make our?
Well, if, if there are specifics, if you want to touch on, on them.
Yeah, and, and I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna state anybody's name, but there's some things that are being asked about the board members reaching out to the most impacted by the issues for us to reach out to them. I would say that it's important that we are all listed on email at the village website. And for you to reach out to us is going to be easier for us than to get back with you. We, we don't necessarily know who you are that's asking for us all the time. And if you can send emails to us, that would be helpful. I think we're placed, if somebody's asking for us to put out the initial statement, we're trying to do that in, in getting this statement out. I think we've been pretty firm with that statement. We're just trying to make it the best possible statement moving forward.
There was, Chris, a comment about not losing sight of the incident, the, the N-word incident that occurred. I think that's a, a good point. And I think what I can do in that, in the way in which we release this statement, which will probably be over our social media process, that I can, I can couch that release such that it's clear that this statement from the board is directly related to that, among other things. But I can specifically call out that issue in the way we couch this, this release.
Okay.
I, and I'd appreciate that, that, that videotape is, is one of the things that we were specifically asked to respond to as a board. So we know based on what we've been learning, that there is a much larger problem, but that incident in particular is something, I feel strongly that we need to address. So again, this is not the end, this is the beginning. And we can begin by saying, now we know. And we know because of what we've, what we've been told, what has been shared with us.
Thanks, Kristin. I, I would just echo, you know, some people are wanting to make sure that we included the statement. And I, I agree, this, that video is horrid. Nobody should ever have to endure that, listen to it, hear it or be doing that act. And this is our start. We're, we're, we are very aware of this topic now as a board. I can't stress enough how much and how important every citizen is in our community. Not just certain privileged people. Every person is important. That said, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments, raise your hand, please. Okay, then Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Phil Willams?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Absolutely, yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Fry? Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Bill Random?
Absolutely.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Chris, I'll, I'll plan to post this up on our social media before I leave the office after a meeting.
Thanks, Todd. Okay, next item on our agenda. Discuss and take action on resolution waiving interest and penalties on certain delinquent property tax installment payments due in 2020. Renee, is this one yours?
Yes. So I think most of you know that the legislature passed Act, Act 185 earlier, I think it was in April, that allows local municipalities to, to waive certain interest and penalties on certain installments of their tax payments if the county that their municipality is in passes a similar type of resolution. And so Dane County did that on May 7th. And so we have had at least one inquiry about, you know, would the, would the village board be adopting such a resolution? So what this does is the second installment for Wannakee residents is due July 31st for their property taxes. And normally if you didn't pay by July 31st, interest and penalties would start to accrue at that point. So if we adopt this resolution tonight, that will mean that somebody really has till the end of September to make their second installment payment and interest and penalties won't start to accrue until October 1st. And it affects the village a little bit in terms of our cash flows. We normally would get all of our, we'd be settled with the county in, on August 20th. Now they're only going to give us our share that they've collected through July 31st. And then they'll give us the rest of our settlement on September 20th. So it's a one month delay for potentially some tax payments if, if our residents choose to delay payment. But I've reviewed our cash flows and we should be able to, you know, weather that extra month if we need to. So, you know, many, many municipalities in Dane County have already adopted a resolution similar to this. And several have it on their agendas for tonight or very soon. Dane County wants these resolutions adopted by June 15th so that they can make the necessary changes in their systems to, to waive these interest and penalties for the extra couple of months. So I guess if people have questions, I can certainly address those.
Okay, let's go through that first. Kristen Rungy, any questions?
No questions for me.
Erin Moran?
No questions.
Nyla Fry? Nyla, you're still muted, sorry.
No questions.
There you are. Phil Willams?
It's perfectly reasonable.
Gary Hertzberg?
No questions.
Bill Random?
No questions.
I almost forgot you, Bill, because you logged in late. So I, I, I'm glad I saw your face pop up that you moved, which was good. My only question, Renee, is I think this is helping taxpayers. The question I had is, has the school district made any comments with regards to, are they voted on this? Because I'm assuming if we vote this way, that's not going to impact them, that they would have to vote on their own.
The school districts and the technical colleges and the county actually do not have any say in this waiving of the interest and penalties and the, the one month delay in getting their property tax collections. It's all left to the municipality. But we did have conversations with the school district and they are okay with this. At first they thought it might be a cash flow issue for them to not receive all their money by August 20th. But they reviewed their financial situation and they agreed that, that it will not negatively impact their cash flows. And so they were okay with us moving forward. And, you know, several other municipalities in the, in the school district have already adopted resolutions or some might be forthcoming and they're okay with it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I, we, we had a discussion as Todd mentioned, and I wanted to make sure that we had the cash flow situation resolved for the school and it sounds like they are, so good. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve. Second. I heard Gary Hertzberg first, so I'm going to say second for Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments, raise your hand, please. Okay, roll call vote, Caitlin?
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Willams?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have discuss and take action on changes to special assessment policy. Renee, as well?
Yes. So this had come up at a listening session, I believe it maybe also came up at a, a board meeting. So the, back in April, we adopted the, the resolution to move forward with the sidewalk replacement project. And so when that is concluded, we end up billing that the homeowners for 50% of the cost of those replacement of those pieces of sidewalk. And so it came up, you know, could there be anything that could be done for people who might be experiencing financial hardship this year due to COVID-19? So our current policy says that if the assessment is less than $500, it needs to be paid in a single installment when they get the bill. And it's not expected that for this year's assessments that any will be over $500. So this would require a change in our policy to, to allow either extra installment payments or to lower the threshold. So what I am suggesting that we do is allow residents some different options. So they can either choose a one-year deferral of their entire amount or they can choose to pay over three-year installments and that we would waive the interest that would normally be charged if you were doing installments. Or people, you know, can choose to pay in full when they receive their bill. So I'm suggesting that this only be a change for the assessments that we are billing in 2020. And that going forward in 2021, we would just go revert back to our normal policy. So again, I can answer any questions on that, but I think it's, could be helpful for some of our residents to, to allow different payment schedules.
Okay, can I just ask Kevin even one quick question? I'm assuming you're there, Kevin, I see your picture, so I'm, I'm hoping that you're there. Do you see any issues with us modifying this policy in any way for you from budgetary spend? Because this is part of your budget.
No, it's a minor amount in terms of the overall budget. It's about $20,000 out of the $2 million budget.
Okay, no concerns. Okay, that was my question. Phil, any questions?
No, I'm ready to make a motion. I think it's very humane.
Okay, let's, well, we'll wait for your motion then. Kristen Rungy?
No questions.
Nyla Fry?
No questions.
Gary Hertzberg?
My only thought is doing two years over three years, but if Renee, if you can track it and it's not an issue for your department, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, it shouldn't be an issue. Our originally policy for between 500 and 2,000 was three years. So then I just kind of stuck with that, so it's fine.
Bill Random?
No questions.
Erin Moran?
No questions. Thank you, Renee, for putting this together.
Okay, Phil, I'm assuming you want to make a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to allow deferral of special assessments for one year or payment in installments over three years for those sidewalk special assessments billed in 2020.
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion by Phil, and second by Nyla Fry. Any other comments, raise your hand? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Erin Moran?
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have discuss and take action on ordinance amending Chapter 6, Article 2 of the Court of Ordinance Concerning Operator Licenses. Caitlin, is that you?
Yes, it is. So in March of this year, Wisconsin Act 166 was signed into law. This act amended state law which allows municipal governing body to designate a municipal official to issue operator's license on behalf of the village. Previously, the law required the governing body to issue those licenses. That's why on several year agendas, almost every single one, not tonight, but you'll see operator license that you need to approve. Attach this memo is a proposed ordinance amendment that has been drafted by the village attorney that would designate me or my designee, which would likely be the deputy clerk if I'm on the office, with the authority to issue the operator's license for the village. Operator license denials will continue to come to the village board. Only approvals can be issued by me in my office. The proposed ordinance also clears up a couple of different language areas to reflect current law. So adopting this would create some great efficiencies for us and our establishments in the community to quickly turn over those operators licenses. So it is proposed for approval tonight. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, Nyla?
No questions.
Kristin?
No questions.
Bill Random?
No questions.
Erin Moran?
No questions.
Gary Hertzberg?
No questions.
Phil Willams?
No questions.
None for me either. Just look for a motion then.
I'll move, we approve the ordinance amending Chapter 6, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances Concerning Operator Licenses.
Okay, motion by Erin Moran?
Second. Sorry.
I think it was Phil, so I'm going to go second to Phil Willams. Any other comments, raise your hand, please. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have discuss and take action on initial hiring, vacation and sick time accrual for sergeant candidates. Adam?
It's Adam and I, Adam and I talking about it. So I can let Adam kind of give an overview of the process that we went through. And then we can discuss the request for one of the candidates that we would like to hire. So Adam, chief?
Thank you. Yeah, so obviously going through some, still some major transition with retirements that we've been working through over the last few months. As part of that, we promoted two sergeants, two lieutenants. And we had two vacant sergeant positions, one of those filled by an internal candidate. And then the other, we'd like to fill with an external candidate. The candidate has 13 years of experience with the State Patrol. Additional experience in a number of specialty areas that would be beneficial. And they went through an application process, three separate interviews along the way. they went through an application process, three separate interviews along the way. And we would ask that you approve this. This candidate specifically currently has around 160 hours of vacation at his current profession, or his current job with the State Patrol. He has a great deal of sick time that he's, that he's giving up, that in, in the law enforcement world and in state government, he would have matched at his retirement. So essentially, he's kind of giving up almost 2,000 hours of sick time to come here and work for the village. You know, we typically don't hire a lot of people from outside into management positions, or it just hasn't happened in, in my career here. And one of the challenges we kind of came across was these people are giving up a great deal of time off and benefits at their current profession, and essentially starting over here. So we'd like to at least acknowledge the sacrifices that they're making to, to come and join our team. We think he's the best candidate for the position, and like to start him off with a, with a little bit of extra vacation time and some sick time.
Yep, so the village handbook allows the village board to hear these requests and make amendments to the offer for, for this type of request. So the police department and administration is requesting that we grant this candidate an annual vacation accrual of 80 hours, provided to the date of hire, and a leave bank of 40 hours upon hiring. And Adam and I are available for any questions if there are any from the board.
Okay, I'll start with Bill Random, any questions?
No, I think, I know him, he's a great candidate, so what we have to do.
Erin Moran.
No questions, Erin.
Gary Hertzberg.
No questions.
Phil Williams.
Great hire.
Kristen Rungy.
Great hire, no questions. I would like to see us be competitive when it comes to hiring people in at mid-career by matching the hours that they get. I, we're in a state government employee environment, and this is one of the few things we can do in lieu of salary.
Okay, thank you, Nyla.
No questions, I agree with what Kristen said, though.
Okay, so you don't think this was a great hire with those other guys, with this not adult joking? So I concur with what everyone else said. Nyla, just teasing, okay, everybody, don't get all that. It's all, it's all good. So Adam, congratulations on getting a higher of this quality, that's to be commended. And I know all the work you're doing right now in, in starting off, not real fun to begin with, maybe, maybe it's exciting, I don't know the answer to that, but hopefully these hires and then the things coming up will, will calm down for you, and I know you guys are doing just a fantastic job now. So I'm going to make the motion to approve.
Second.
Phil Williams is the second, any other comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thanks, Adam, I know you're busy.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate the support, thanks.
And our last item, discuss and take action on recommendation from Wannaboom Committee regarding July 4th, 2020 celebration. So I just have to find the, the statement, and I will be right with you guys. Since I sit on the Wannaboom Committee, and we've been going back and forth for quite some time, I did have Todd just before our meeting forward the recommendation in writing to all of you. This was not an easy decision for us, but it was, it's, it's the right decision. And I hope that you guys agree with the, the committee. And I'm just going to read this so the public sees it as well or hears it. Wannaboom is a wonderful event for families in and around Wannakee. Our committee wanted to do everything possible to hold this event during these difficult times. We've been patient in announcing our decision as we were watching to see if the pandemic would subside, and we could potentially hold the event. Wannaboom was made possible five years ago by a group of people that wanted to make this happen for the community. It is funded through sponsorship and donations, and our business community has stepped up, as well as individuals year after year, including this year. It also takes hundreds of hours to plan and many volunteers to make it happen. The Wannaboom Committee has discussed options to have some sort of Fourth of July celebration. The committee agrees that the safety of guests and volunteers is of the highest importance. It is also important to use the donations so that everyone can enjoy this safely. The discussion points we had, and the options that we looked at was hold the event as usual. It's really not possible with social distancing and group size per Dane County Public Health orders. We looked at just having fireworks only in the park. Not possible with social distancing and group size per Dane County Public Health orders. Marking grass with designated areas wasn't really realistic, as it would take many volunteers and planning, and people would still not necessarily comply with that. Exiting the park would also be challenging for social distancing. Next, it was it may be the only firework event in the area, drawing thousands more people to Wannakee. All the other events have been canceled in the Madison market, including Wannafest later in the month. Shake the Lake was canceled, the Monona fireworks were canceled, the DeForest camp fireworks were canceled. The challenge we looked at was, can we infrastructure-wise even, even attempt to look at something like that if we have 150,000 people show up in Wannakee? The answer is no. I discussed it with the police chief as well, and we were all in agreement, just to keep the place safe would have been nearly impossible. Next, drive-in, I'd have a drive-in where people could come into the park. Allowing cars to drive on park grass would require many volunteers, logistics, and future repairs to the grass. Not recommended by the Parks Department. Social distancing would not necessarily be followed, as people would be inclined to tailgate and come out of cars. My son's significant other is a nurse in Madison. We did have a flyover that came over Wannakee, actually, and then in through Madison. And we went to the parking lot by the hospital, and it looked like a brewer game where everybody was tailgating, and there was no social distancing going on. That was probably not a good thing for me to see from the drive-in perspective or thing, because I think people would do the same thing here. Closing Rip Park and still doing the fireworks, not really realistic as well, as we'd need the volunteers to monitor the park. Still need the police, still need the fire, still need the EMS, and viewing would be limited. To spend the money from our sponsors without any recognition on fireworks, we really want to have a full viewing opportunity for everyone. The vendors, we reached out to all of our vendors beforehand here. As many of the activities we provide to our guests have close contact with one another, whether it be bounce houses to laser tag to rock climbing, it just did not make sense for us to put all the children in harm's way, potentially. Think of if we have this and 150,000 people show up and they go out to the rest. Dr. Random, I think you'd understand what I'm getting at for sure. It would be a nightmare situation from a healthcare perspective. So to spend the money on the fires, all those, all the vendors have been great to work with. They understand, they want to keep their own safety as well, because they have to come in the park and do things. So for those who may challenge, we looked at even other options for what we could do. One of those was a drive-through similar to what we have from the Rotary, which Phil does every year. Phil, I'm just going to give you a prop right now and say, if you're looking to volunteer for something, help the Rotary with their lights and setup and takedown. It's during the cold time, I know that, but they can use your help, there's no doubt. We have a couple people that put in enormous hours to do that. So we looked at doing a light display similar to Rotaries, and it was just held in Madison, and there was the light of flights, I think is what it was called, by the airport. We had a company come in. The problem was it was quite expensive, it was actually more expensive to do that than to run the entire event of Wannaboom. So it just didn't make any sense with the monies that we've had to put out for donations, or not donations, for down payments. Last was postponed till August. Too much unknown with public health orders and pandemic, logistically getting the volunteers, putting it all together, not knowing, just didn't work. So you probably can figure out where we came to for a recommendation, which is at the end of, of the sheet handed to you, or emailed to you, the Wannaboom Committee has said and to recommend that due to COVID-19, Dane County Public Health Orders, we're unable to host our event this year. The health and safety of our guests and volunteers were at the forefront of our decision. We look forward to a great event on July 4th, 2021. Wannakee will be 150 years old next year. We'll be sure to make the event the best yet, and hopefully we'll have everything in order with this pandemic by that time. For those interested in volunteering for the event in 2021, we can always use your help, whether it be for ideas coming to our committee meetings, helping the day of the events. We thank everybody for their support with this event, and that's really the recommendation at this point, is to cancel the event. The committee made that recommendation, they're the ones who do all the work for this per se, to get it to take place. Which was not, like I said, this is people that want to have this happen. So with that, we've been a motion, or if you guys have comments or questions that you'd like to make. So let me go to Phil, do you have any comments or questions about this? You're, you're still muted, Phil.
I think it's a good idea to cancel it for the time being. Even our senior picnic that we always hold July 8th is going to be a virtual drive-by. They're not going to be able to sit and think, but we're still going to supply them with a rot, rot roast dinner and dessert, et cetera. They'll just have to drive by and pick it up. But it'll be great. So.
Thank you. Bill Random.
Sorry, it's not going to be here, but I think it's the right plan.
Kristen Rungy.
I agree, wish we could have it, it's responsible to cancel it.
Nyla Frye.
We'll miss it, look forward to having it next year.
Erin Moran.
I agree. Sad, but responsible decision at this point.
Gary Hertzberg.
I agree, but it'll be great in 2021.
This is a hard decision, guys, I've been, I have, this is near and dear to my heart. I know it is to a lot of people, I know there's going to be people disappointed and look and say, well, couldn't you do something? We looked at so many different things, and the committee spent hours trying to figure out a way to make this happen. There's just not a good choice for us right now to put so many people at potential risk. So with that, I need a motion from someone.
I moved.
Go ahead, Kristen, we'll let you go first.
I moved to accept the Wannaboom Committee's recommendation to cancel the fireworks for this year due to COVID-19.
Can I say Wannaboom just as opposed to the fireworks, because otherwise.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you, okay. So. Did somebody say second?
I'll second.
Second by Bill Random. Okay, any other comments, raise your hand? Okay, I'll call the question. Caitlin.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone, stay safe, and the community, know that we have a safe community, and we will continue to do that. Our people are good people, and we'll continue to move things forward. So thanks, everybody, good night.
We got a new motion to adjourn.
I'm going to say, Gary, you were the second, but I'm going to give Bill the first.
Fine.
Okay, roll call vote.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.